I am calling to order this meeting of the Town of Silver City Council. Would you please join us in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight, too. The first item on our agenda is changes to the agenda. Do we have any changes in the council? Okay, then moving along, our next item is proclamations. We have three proclamations tonight. We're going to recognize Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and we're going to recognize Autism Awareness Day, and we're going to recognize Bird Butterfly and Bee Friendly Day in Silver For those here for the Sexual Assault Awareness Month, please come forward. Whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member. Whereas rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community as seen by statistics indicating that one in five women and one in 67 men will be raped at some point in their lives. And whereas child sexual abuse prevention must be a priority to confront the reality that one in six boys and one in four girls will experience a sexual assault before the age of 18. And whereas young people experience hyphen rates of sexual violence, and youth ages 12 through 17 were two and a half times as likely to be victims of rape or sexual assault. And whereas we must work together to educate our community about sexual violence prevention, supporting survivors, and speaking out against harmful attitudes and actions. And whereas with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is evidence that we can be successful in preventing sexual violence through increased education, awareness, and community involvement. Whereas the Town of Silver City strongly supports the efforts of national, state, and local partners and of every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts to prevent sexual violence. It is time for all of us to start conversations, take appropriate action, and support one another to create a safer environment for ourselves. Now therefore, I Ken Ladner, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, join advocates and communities across the country in playing an active role to prevent sexual violence, along with the United States Government and the State of New Mexico. I do hereby proclaim April 2018 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Shall it...who would like to respond?
Thank you. I am Chelsea Cooper. I'm the Executive Director of SAS. I just want to say thank you for all the support that we get from the community. We have quite a few events going on throughout the month of April. Our next upcoming event will be Thursday at 6:00 PM at El Refugio. It's for not just sexual assault victims of crime, but all victims of crime, so we hope to see some of you there.
Thank you all for all the good work that you do. Whereas Autism Spectrum Disorder, ASD, is a lifelong developmental disability resulting in significant impairment of an individual's ability to learn, develop healthy interactive behaviors, and understand verbal, nonverbal, and reciprocal communication. And whereas ASD is the third most common developmental disability affecting tens of millions worldwide and around 3.5 million individuals nationwide. And whereas persons with autism spectrum disorder can succeed and reach their highest potential with effective community-based supports. Accurate, early diagnosis, and the resulting appropriate education and intervention are vital to the future growth and development of the individual. And whereas supportive groups such as the Silver City Autism Awareness Group and the WNMU School of Social Work have dedicated their time and service in an ongoing effort to advocate for the rights, humane treatment, and appropriate education of all persons with ASD. Whereas these groups remain committed to individuals with ASD and to educating families, professionals, and the general public to better understand ASD. And whereas autism spectrum disorder is a complex disability that requires a greater recognition and understanding to ensure that individuals with ASD living in southern New Mexico and all around the world are afforded a self-determined life full of dignity, respect, and fulfillment. Now therefore, I Ken Ladner, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the Town of Silver City, Grand County, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim April 14, 2018, as Autism
Mayor and council members, thank you for having us here tonight. I'm a parent of a child with autism, and this means so much to our community that you recognize, support, and encourage families like myself and others here tonight who are living with and caring for an individual with autism. Thank you again.
Will one of you tell us a little bit about the events coming up Saturday?
I got you. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members. My name is Amherst Fay. I'm an MSW student and the organizer of the Autism Awareness Walk. That's going to be happening this Saturday at Foxfield from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and I just wanted to welcome everybody to please come join us. This is going to be an event about celebration and inclusion and awareness, and so that's what this is all about, and we really appreciate the proclamation and the support that we've gotten from the community. So, thank you.
Is it okay if this young lady would like to say something as a sibling of an individual with autism?
Hello. Hi, I'm Mariah Lewis. I'm the sister of Fred who I was working with. I would very welcome you guys to come and to the buddy walk on Saturday because I will be helping with a booth there, and I want to say thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. See you Saturday. For those here for the Bird Butterfly and Bee Friendly Day in Silver City, please Whereas the mission of Silver City includes protecting our recreational activities and high quality of life. And whereas birds, butterflies, and bees, and the native plants they depend on enhance community aesthetics and provide opportunities for recreational viewing. And whereas the Southwestern New Mexico Audubon Society received a grant from the National Audubon Society to promote Silver City as a bee, butterfly, and bee-friendly community... as a bird, butterfly, and bee-friendly community. And whereas the Southwestern New Mexico Audubon Society received a grant from the National Audubon Society's Coleman and Susan Burke Foundation for native plants, another from the Southwestern New Mexico Green Chamber of Commerce, to provide free native plants for members of the community as part of Earth Day in Golf Park in Silver City on April the 21st. Now therefore, I Ken Ladner, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, do hereby proclaim April 21, 2018, as Bird Butterfly and Bee Friendly Day in Silver City, and encourage the residents of Silver City to attend the Earth Day festivities and obtain a free native plant that will support birds, butterflies, and bees in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and audience. I'd like to, as you said, invite everybody to Earth Day on Golf Park on April 21st during 10 and 2. We'll have a limited supply of free native plants. We'll also have a supply of free seeds, sunflower seeds that will be handed out. There'll be lots of information, including some that's at the table over to the side. So, please join us April 21st at Golf Park.
The next item on the agenda is council comments. Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Alex Brown, and Lorenzo, and Edward for the work done at the Golf Park on the flag poles and all that, and again, thank you for the flags. And also special thanks to Fred Baca for Lulat Council 33, 8003. We, the Vietnam Brothers, did a car ride there, which was very, very nice, and I videotaped it, so it'll come out eventually. Please be patient with all the construction work that's been going on and around. Make sure that you have enough time to get from one point to another point. We had the Senior Olympics bingo, and it turned out to be very well. In case anybody wants to join and participate in the Senior Olympics, call Mario Quintana, and his number is 590-2352, or you can talk to Councilor Kano. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ayman Smith?
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. I just have a few comments. Tomorrow, Wednesday, April 11th at 10:00 AM, on 16th and Juniper, which is actually Councilor Beddison's area, but she's allowed me to announce this, there'll be a groundbreaking for the senior affordable housing development that is going on there, and so we're really excited about this. It took two years of working together with the council and this entity, and our county attorney, especially, we're totally hard on this, and so come out if you can. I know that some people are traveling and won't be able to be there. On Friday, April 13th, there's a tourism town hall from 8:30 to 12:30 at the conference center, and it looks like it's going to be a really interesting lineup of speakers, and that is about tourism in our area. I had down here that we had an Autism Awareness Walk on Saturday, but I think that was already spoken about. And also on Saturday downtown is the Love Local celebrates local merchants. So, if you come downtown, and you'll find games to play, and some discounts, and some things to do in our beautiful downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Beddison?
Thank you, Mayor. So first, I want to apologize. I will not be able to attend anything Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or Sunday. So, I'll be traveling, and hence my colleague announcing a ribbon cutting in District One, which I hope that all of you can attend, those of you who can, and I look forward to seeing all of the other council members there and seeing what the groundbreaking. I think that's going to be an exciting event. So, I just wanted to...I know people keep emailing me and asking me if I'm going to be somewhere, and I keep saying no. I'm sorry. I'll be traveling, and we'll be unable to do that. It's a work-related commitment, not this work, other work. I also wanted to mention that it was just briefly stated by the mayor that we have the Earth Day celebration coming up on April 21st. It's 10 to 2 in Golf Park, and there'll be native plants, herbs and veggies, vegetables and things like that available for sale from a...I can't remember how many different vendors. There will be document shredding. Bring your documents, get them shredded for free. It's a great deal. And e-waste recycling. So, I know that GRIP is part of the big sponsorship of this, and I just want to thank them for still continuing with this because it's a good thing for all of us to get rid of some of this material that we have to do, and I have to admit, I like to save all my documents till I can get them shredded at once. It's kind of fulfilling to just see the bags go in, and then they're gone. Coming up then, later in the week, on Thursday, April 26th, is an Open Meetings Act and Inspection of Public Records Act compliance training that is offered by the New Mexico Attorney General's Office, and if you would like to attend, they do ask that you RSVP to Patricia Salazar at Road Shows, with an S on the end, at mmag.gov, or by telephone at 505-490-4863. It is free of charge. It will be held at Western New Mexico University at the Besti Forward Global Resource Center from 9:00 to 12:00 PM. So if you want to know anything and everything about the Open Meetings Act and the Inspection of Public Records Act compliance that governments, with the exception of our state legislature, have to conform with, I would suggest that you say that you would like to go because it's free, and I think you'll get booklets, too. And the last thing I wanted to mention was today is Equal Pay Day, and if women in the United States received equal pay comparable with men, poverty for working women would be reduced by half, and the U.S. economy would have been added...would have added $513 billion in wages and salary income. So just a thought for today. It says we have three women on our council.
All being paid the same as the mayor.
All being paid the same as the mayor, as my...zero plus zero equals zero. Thank you, Mayor.
You're worth every penny.
That's right.
Councilor Kano?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would just like to thank Chief Milo Lambert and the Civil Safety Fire Department. I received a phone call from a local church a couple of days ago. Apparently, the fire department is going to all of the large buildings in town and learning the floor plans and being a little bit more aware of what's going on, you know, if there's offices that are locked, or where they would have to look in case of an emergency. And that church felt really safe with that, and so I really appreciate them for doing that. It wasn't just him. He showed up, I guess, with three truckloads of firefighters, so it was pretty impressive to the congregation. Another thing is that April is Advanced Directives Month. It's a national, a nationally recognized month. And Advanced Directives, for those who don't know, are the decisions that you make about the care that you want in case of a medical emergency, or also towards the end of your life if you have a serious illness. And I know a lot of people don't want to talk about that, but it's really, really important that you do. Having that conversation with your loved ones is a gift. Letting them know what you want before they need to make those decisions is something really special that you can do. And if you're interested in working on your Advanced Directives, you can either...if you're in this room right now, you can see the four women that are in the front row. I know they can all assist with that, and actually, there's a few others in the audience. Or you can send me a message, and I will make sure that one of them contacts you and helps you with that. And then the last thing is April 14th is the first of the four districts territorial charter work day, and we are going to be doing that from 10 to 2 at Ibarra Park on Corbin State. And if you don't mind, if I could get Mr. Staley to come up and give us a little bit more of a report on that, since he's the one that's been doing all the work for it, along with James Marshall.
Mayor and members of the council, excuse me, my throat's a little rough. Every time I come to one of these, my wife says as I go out the door that I don't say anything stupid, so I'm trying real hard. This Saturday from 10 to 2, we will be painting the town, at least one park in the town, at the corner of Corbin and Yankee. It's just off of East Broadway. Go up the hill east from Hudson Stoplight, and it's the second, straight to your left, Corbin. And Mr. Brown's crew has sandblasted all of the walls and have them ready for us to paint. We also have some other projects, depending on the number of people who show up. We would much rather have more work than we can do than have not enough work for volunteers to come and participate in. So, we hope that the newspapers will put this out and give us a good read on this between now and Saturday so that we can have a lot of volunteers come. Come with some, definitely some sunscreen, and some sun shade, and some work gloves, and everything else will be provided as far as the paint rollers and the paint and the other things that we need. Now, for those who do feel that they can't perform physical work, or we have some things that you can do at the Bister Center. Charmaine Waite has agreed to have whoever wants to come there and help with some projects there. So, this is the first of four this year, and the first of many in the future, and we hope that everyone will come out and join us. Thank you. Any questions?
Kano?
Thank you, Mayor. That's last.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? I just have a couple. This past week, the community lost two members that have played important roles in our community. Mr. John Crowe, who is known with the Heal a Community Net, which is a real popular online forum, has passed away, and Mr. Henry Torres, who was years ago, played an important role in many aspects of the community. He served seven years on the county commission. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the March 27, 2018 regular meeting. Councilor Ayman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of March 27, 2018.
Aye. Is there a second?
Just a second of the motion statement.
Councilor Beddison? Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public input, and I see that we have two people that signed up. Rochelle Bergman, if you'll come up and take your five minutes?
Okay. Well, thank you. My name is Rochelle Bergman, and I'm here as a resident of the Town of Silver City to speak against ordinance number 1266 that proposes to change the town council meeting from 6:00 PM to 9:30 AM, and that is item 2D on the agenda. Since moving to Silver City, I've become more involved with keeping up with what's happening in town than I've been anywhere else I've lived. I've attended at least three town council meetings since moving here, and I participated in the silent study. I never even thought about attending any sort of town council meeting anyplace else. One reason is because I really love this town, but also because I found the government and town employees accessible and really interested in serving the town, and all that makes me more interested in participating where I can. The notice of intent says that the change in time will contribute to the efficiency of government and generally be more convenient for the public in attendance, town staff, and members of the council. I disagree with two of these points, efficiency and convenience for the public. I work, and by changing the meeting time to 9:30 AM, I certainly have to think twice about attending a meeting to support other speakers or a proclamation that supports a group that I've been involved with. I would have to either take personal time off or make up time in the evening for my work, but I'm lucky enough to have that choice. But for an hourly wage earner with a fixed income, working regular working hours during the day, it means spending or losing money to attend a meeting. So if you move the meeting to 9:30 AM, you restrict potential public engagement by making it more difficult for people who work during the day to attend. Efficiency. Well, from this side of the desk, this meeting is very efficient. It seems that most of the background work is done. You've decided on the comments you're going to make. In the council comments section, about the proclamation and reports and resolutions are all there on the agenda. On the other hand, I don't think efficiency is what this meeting is about. It's about communication. This meeting is where you publicly present your opinions, ask questions of town staff about reports, and vote on resolutions, on the record, in front of the town as a whole. And it's where any citizen, resident of Silver City, can speak on the record to the whole governing body at once, and I'd hate that to become more difficult. I appreciate your willingness to meet at 6:00 PM, to meet in the evening. As tired as we all are at the end of the day, I think for most residents, the 6:00 PM time most effectively meets the purpose of this meeting. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Karen Whitlock.
Hi, I'm Karen Whitlock. I'm a little tall. I can move it up? Oh, because it says do not move. Karen...
Mayor and council members, I'm Karen Whitlock, and I am speaking tonight as a social worker and in support of the resolution, I believe it is 2C on the end-of-life options. Is that the correct number? Did I get that? 11C, sorry. 11C. And I just wanted to speak to this. This has been in the legislature, in the state legislature, in different forms over different years, and has provided very...has...I'm sorry. It has been in the legislature and has been full of safeguards so that only competent people can address this issue, the end-of-life options. They have to be able to administer the drug themselves and have to get a physician's approval. This resolution would support a patient's right to choose. This is not for those who do not want it. As social workers, it's important to provide our clients with self-determination if they're competent to choose an end-of-life option. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Only two people signed up for public input, so next on the agenda is reports. Mr. Brown?
Mayor and council, I've got a few reports. One is the Silver Street project that was supposed to start this last Monday has been postponed until next Monday, so it'll start this next week, so the traffic problems are going to get worse. The trails that...we had a bunch of public input, public comment last week about the trails last week, and James sent me an update right before the council meeting, and he's met with Robert Escada, who's talked to the contractor, and they're going to make sure all the gates are closed. sure all the gates are closed, fences are fixed, and um they now have started working on uh all the access points to the trail system from private property. And so they're looking at all of that stuff. Uh, so uh, so we're moving on that. And then uh, I just wanted to let you know that the staff is working on a new um water shut-off policy. Um, I think uh we are looking right now at continuing the same process that we currently have in place, which is to, if you're shut off, uh, after forty-five days of non-payment, uh, then you have to come in, pay reconnect fee, pay the delin- the past due fee and your current bill as well. But um anyone that has not uh had their water shut off in the last tw- uh twelve months is what I'm looking at right now, uh, we would waive the reconnect fee and only uh have them pay the current delinquent bill. And we're working on that right now, but I think we have to change, we might have to change the ordinance because the ordinance requires that we charge everybody the reconnect fee right now. And so I wouldn't be able to uh implement this policy if I firmly abided by that. Um, so um with that, oh, uh, we've uh, you know, we talked about the Bank of America Building and all that property. Um, I did talk to the bank manager. Uh, she has sent uh my proposal to add a couple years to the lease um to up her upper management, and so we're waiting to hear about that. And I've also met with um Tim Castillo from U N M. uh School of Architecture, and they are going to work with the town to help start doing some mock renderings so that we have some some visual uh ideas of what we might be able to do there, and so we can work at, move forward to decide what the town council wants to ultimately end up doing with that property. And with that, I, that's all I have.
Any questions? When I spoke with you earlier, you indicate uh today, you indicated that you don't shut water off on Fridays.
We've never shut water off.
So that allows someone to have their water turned off, I mean, uh, turned off and then turned on before the weekend catches them where the offices are closed.
We try to make sure that we don't turn waters off no later than on Wednesday, so that they have a couple days to come back in to turn it back on if they do something else. But we've never turned it off on Fridays.
Good. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is uh new business. New business item eleven A is the approval slash disapproval of two public celebration permit applications for the Members Regional Arts Council twenty-third Annual Silver City Blues Festival from May the twenty-fifth, twenty-five through twenty-seven, two thousand eighteen, with alcohol service from five P M. to ten thirty P M. on uh Friday, May the twenty-fifth, from noon to nine P M. on Saturday, May twenty-sixth, and from noon to five P M. on Sunday, May twenty-seven. Liquor license holder, one, Little Toad Creek LLC DBA Little Toad Creek Distillery, license number six-three-zero-one-three-two-zero-three-South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico, and two, Little Toad Creek LLC DBA Little Toad Creek Brewery, license number six-seven-zero-eight-five-two-zero-three-South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico. And I believe we have Kevin and David here.
Yeah. Okay. So we are looking forward to the twenty-third Annual Silver City Annual Blues Festival. Um, I'd like to say that um as far as the festival and the town, nothing should be too different than last year. Um, we're having some good communication with staff and and um we're looking forward to another great festival. Uh, again, the layout, um, the footprint, I should say, will be uh the same as last year. We're not anticipating any changes there, and um just looking to forward to a great festival.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Thank you. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Connaught.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve of two public celebration permit applications for the Members Regional Arts Council's twenty-third Annual Silver City Blues Festival from May twenty-fifth to twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, with alcohol service from five P M. to ten thirty P M. on Friday, May twenty-fifth, from noon to nine P M. on Saturday, May twenty-sixth, and from noon to five P M. on Sunday, May twenty-seventh. Liquor license holder, number one, Little Toad Creek LLC DBA Little Toad Creek Distillery, license number six-three-zero-one-three-two-zero-three-South Mill, South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico, and number two, Little Toad Creek LLC DBA Little Toad Creek Brewery, license number six-seven-zero-eight-five-two-zero-three-South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that.
Councilor Wright? Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Any questions or comments from the general public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item is eleven B, the approval slash disapproval of two public celebration permit applications for the annual Toad Fest Brewery's Guide Takeover, Tap Takeover, on April twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, with alcohol services from two P M. to eleven P M. Liquor license holder, Little Toad Creek LLC DBA Little Toad Creek Distillery, license number six-three-zero-one-three-two-zero-three-South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico, and two, Little Toad Creek LLC DBA Little Toad Creek Brewery, license number six-seven-zero-eight-five-two-zero-three-South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico. Dave?
Okay, so this is going to be our third, fourth Toad Fest, and what it is is a state tap takeover. Um, nothing's changing this year from last year. We'll be doing most of the festivities inside. Um, we're gonna expand out into the back alley, which doesn't interfere with anybody. It's just using a outdoor spot to to allow people to be outside. Weather's good. Um, nothing else has changed. We're looking forward to it. It's a great opportunity for Silver City and southwest New Mexico to get to try some of the beers from the rest of the state that normally they won't get to try. So it's kind of a, kind of a good thing for us, so we're excited.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions from the council?
Yes, sir.
Okay, uh, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Wright?
I move to approve of two public celebration permits application for the annual Toad Fest Brewers' Guide, appealed tap takeover on April twenty-eighth, two thousand eighteen, with alcohol service from two P M. to eleven P M. Liquor license holder, number one, Little Toad Creek LLC DBA Little Toad Creek Distillery, license number six-three-zero-one-three-two-zero-three-South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico, and two, Little Toad Creek LLC DBA Little Toad Creek Brewery, license number six-seven-zero-eight-five-two-zero-three-South Mill Road, South Mill, Silver City, New Mexico.
Thank you. Pro motion. Is there a second? Councilor Ayman Smith.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion's statement.
Motion second. Uh, is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Any questions or comments from the general public? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Councilor Edison?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pause a little break for a break.
Okay, we have a motion for a short break. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will take a ten-minute break. Calling the meeting, calling the meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is eleven C, the approval slash disapproval of resolution number Resolution supporting the enactment of the End of Life Options Act by the New Mexico Legislature. Councilor Connaught?
Thank you, Mayor. My vice begins with a history of how this resolution came about. I know that for quite some time, a very committed group of individuals in town had been thinking about the need for this resolution. Uh, then in two thousand seventeen, a bill made it through both the Senate and the House and was um actually voted in affirmative by our senator. It was then sent to the governor who vetoed it. Um, we will be getting a new governor during the next legislative session, and um there's at least a fifty percent chance that the new governor will agree that this should be signed into law. Um, as a result, the thought is that if many communities can pass resolutions in support of this bill, then it'll be reintroduced in the two thousand nineteen session and hopefully passed. Albuquerque and Las Cruces are both currently in the process of considering this resolution as well. The End of Life Options Act is written to make it lawful for a resident in New Mexico who is over the age of eighteen, legally competent, and diagnosed with a terminal disease to be given the option to prescribe a combination of medications that will end a person's life. It is not something that will be required in any way, but yet will be an option available to those who seek it out. This legislation will hold medical professionals and family members harmless um if the person chooses to end their life. The legislation requires that the individual request the prescription themselves, and it must also be capable of taking the medication themselves. It cannot be administered by someone else. End of life options are not suicide. The patient must have been diagnosed with a terminal illness to qualify for this prescription. As of last week, the legislation has passed in seven states and the District of Columbia. In Oregon, the first state where um this was passed, it's been a law for twenty years. What's been found is that those who have requested, of those who have requested a prescription, only approximately one-third have actually used it. In many cases, it simply provides a sense of comfort to the patient as they reach the end of their life. There have not been any abuses of the law as there are such strict regulations of when it can be used and when it cannot. In New Mexico, polls have consistently shown that two out of three voters agree with the legislation and feel that mentally competent adults diagnosed with a terminal illness with no hope of recovery should have the choice to request and receive medication which could bring about their own death. This legislation will in no way require that any patient make this decision, but rather would make it an option for those who find themselves in a terminally ill situation and choose to utilize this option. The legislation in no way trumps an individual's faith as it is a choice, and um someone could also choose to let nature take its course instead. Um, this is it. When I was approached about the resolution, I found it to be well-written, but it didn't have any actual action attached to it that would make it binding in some way. So I rewrote the therefore let it be resolved section. Um, I somehow complained to Scabron, and the result is what you have before you. Um, it is binding, and then it requires us to present it to every legislator to make sure they are aware that Silver City does support passing, the passing of the bill. Um, it'll be presented now to the legislature as legislators are working on interim committees and will also be presented at the beginning of next session, as there will be many, several, uh, there'll be several new legislators at that time. Um, we've already had several members of the community reach out to share their support of the resolution. We've also received a representative, a message from Representative Bill McCamley, who is one of the sponsors of the bill. He's representative in Las Cruces, Misti, and Thirtevas. Um, he couldn't be here this evening because he's on the campaign trail um as he speaks. He urges to pass the resolution stating, um, and this is a quote from him, clearly this is an emotional and difficult topic, but other states are now allowing the practice of New Mex- are now allowing the practice, and New Mexicans should have the same right. Additionally, at the legislature, actions like yours make a difference in showing the body that that support for the new law is there. Um, I know there are several people in the audience who wish to share their thoughts and comments with us this evening, and I wish to thank each one of them for being willing to step up and speak on a topic that is so deeply personal to a lot of people. I also know, um, I did not attach a copy of the bill to my resolution, and I know that was a mistake on my part. Um, so after the public speaks, I would like to potentially change my motion to postpone this to another meeting date so that we can, so everyone can look at that bill and and have a little bit more information before they vote. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you making a motion?
No. I would like the community to speak first.
Um, well, would it be more appropriate for the public to speak after we have a motion?
Well, if I postpone it, then they won't be speaking on a postponement. They would still be speaking on the issue. So I don't know. Yeah.
Okay, I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll let you figure out who you'd like to speak in support of it.
Okay.
I will permit that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so um I believe Ms. Dare, are you prepared?
Thank you. My name is Adrienne Dare, and I want to thank you for giving me this opportunity to talk about this topic. Uh, I've lived in Silver City for almost thirty-eight, thirty-nine, thirty-two years, and I am wanting to share my very positive experience with medical aid and dying. My mother was able to use Oregon's Death with Dignity Act so that she could die peacefully at home surrounded by her family when her pain became unbearable, and this was clearly something she wanted for herself. In two thousand two, Mom was ninety years old and diagnosed with terminal cancer. Unfortunately, in her case, the pain could not be controlled. Fortunately, she lived in Oregon. And because it was legal in Oregon, this process was was not scary or frightening or lonely, and um I was able to spend some quality time with my mother at the end of her life. She was comforted by my being there, and I wanted to share one special gift that she gave me, this, this something that I did not know about, is an autist heart that my father had given to my mother after they married. And it's damaged on one side because I teed on it as a baby. So this is really special to me. When Mom made her first request for aid and dying, uh, I actually cried when I heard her tell the doctor that she was ready to die. Uh, my mom, being a very caring person, said to the doctor, you won't get in trouble, will you? Well, from that point on, I was not sure she would be able to make a second request because the pain was just getting worse and worse. But somehow she was keeping track of when she needed to make the second request because two weeks later, she said to me, Adrian, I can't stand the pain. I want to see my doctor. And soon, September fifth, two thousand two, was chosen for two volunteers to come down to Mom's home with a terminal medication. My brother arrived on September third, and my mom was really happy to see him. She had a big smile on her face and welcomed him with open arms. On the Fourth of September, I noticed Mom was asking for uh water to drink, which was unusual for her, and I realized she was concerned about being able to swallow, and so she was practicing for the next day. That night, I sat at her bedside all night long, and at one point, I put my head down on her bed, and I heard her say, Adrian, don't cry. I'm all right. And a little later, later, I heard her say, I love you all, and I realized she was practicing for the next day. Well, in the morning, I gave, about an hour before the volunteers came, I gave her her anti-nausea medicine, and then once everybody was there, there was my brother and me and our spouses, her minister, and the two volunteers. My sister-in-law said to Mom, thank you for giving me Tim, my brother. My mom still had a sense of humor, and she said, thanks for taking him. Her minister asked her if she wanted a prayer, and my mother, who was very active in the church her whole life, said no. She really wanted to just get this over with. The volunteer then told her she could change her mind. Of course, she did not want to change her mind. And then when she was handed the six ounces of fluid to drink, she was chugging that down as fast as she could, and within a few minutes, she was unconscious, and within ten or fifteen minutes, she was, she was dead. And also, aftermath, the volunteer who was sitting at the foot of the bed told me that when Mom finished drinking the the medicine, she had a little smile on her face. So this was very positive and profound for me, and it was something that Mom wanted for herself. And best of all, she was no longer in pain. And for almost sixteen years now, I have been comforted by the fact that she had this this option. And also for twenty years, as we've said, Oregon has been, uh, had the Death with Dignity Act, and those people that do, uh, participate- Act, and those people that do participate in that, they are comforted, because they feel they have control at the end of their life, because they have the medicine to take. And, but one-third of those people that get the prescription do not take it and die comfortably, because they are, have been comforted by the fact that they had this choice. Thank you so much. And if anybody has any questions about this, I'd love to talk about it, so let me know.
I'm Reverend Dr. Jane Foricker Thompson. My first career was as a criminologist, both in the field and as a professor, and then I gave up on that and went to seminary and became an ordained Episcopal priest. I have helped several hundred people in their death process. Some of it's been very beautiful, and some of it's been ugly. The most beautiful deaths have been the ones where people were prepared to die, ready to die, and then made their peace with it. And for those who had faith, that was even better. It included my own husband. He'd been failing for five years. They had all kinds of medical care under the V A., but they were not able to stop the process. And towards the very end of his life, he was in a V A. hospital in Reno, and they were pumping him with things and doing all kinds of things, and he was just so tired and worn out, and it was clear that he was actively dying. And Reno was a medical training hospital, and it was connected with U N R Medical School, and there were a lot of young doctors there, wanting to try a lot of new things on him, as if he were a piece of meat. And he looked at me, and I said, he said, "I just want to go home." And I said, "You know, if we go home, you will die there." And he said, "Yes, I know." Well, they did not want to release him, but with the help of a friend, who was also a hospice worker, we were able to get him out, and she talked the, them into paying for the ambulance ride, which was sixty miles home. He died within a few days, surrounded by all of his children and most of his grandchildren, and he had a beautiful death under hospice. I want everyone to have that kind of death, the kind of death that they choose. And I have seen deaths of people in hospitals, I've been a hospital chaplain and a prison chaplain, I've seen all kinds of deaths, and those who are connected to machines are the most miserable and the unhappy and incomplete situations. It's more humane to let people die on their own and at their own time. If they're in terminal situation and in pain, it's just humane to let them die at their own choice. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I do not know your name. I'm on the end, I know you want to speak, but I don't remember your name. No, not called me either. Okay, she's not, okay, just one more then. Okay, so, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name. So, Calvin, I don't know your last name, so can you tell us when you get to the microphone? Thank you. This is the last one.
I'm Dr. Keldwin Garland, and I'm a retired mental health professional who has worked in end-of-life for over forty years, as well as going through personal experiences in my family and with my friends. And I wanted to speak to you tonight about it, because it, to me, is a right of choice. And when I moved here, before even I moved to Silver City, I'm in my sixth year of living here, I had met Adrienne, and we talked, and then I began teaching classes through Will on the Ninth Age of Human, looking at retirement and end-of-life, and then Adrienne and I could taught a class on end-of-life options and choices, it was a five series on it. But in my work, the last twenty years of my work was primarily in geriatrics and working with people who were coming to terms with their life concluding. And one of the things that I found so much is the fear that comes out of feeling helpless and powerless and out of control. And one of the things that this act does is it gives people the right of choice and to have power and control over their life. Whether they execute it, like Adrienne was saying, only one-third of the people in Oregon who ever got the medication used it, but it's the empowerment of "I'm in charge of me" instead of somebody else. The other key piece with it is the fact that the person has to be mentally competent and reach that criteria mental health-wise. I've done a lot of evaluations for the courts in terms of competency and guardianship, et cetera. And that's one of the pieces in this, is mentally competent with a terminal illness that has no likely or a possibility of remission. And people who have that status have a right to choice, because they can end up in excruciating pain that is prolonged suffering. We had a situation happen, I was living in Florida before I retired, and in the county south of where I lived, there was a physician that was being charged with murder, because he had an elderly patient with cancer, and it was an excruciating form of cancer, and so he had the man on palliative care of morphine. And he also knew that as he raised the morphine levels, the possibility of this person dying was there. And he had to debate that, but his intention was to keep the person out of pain. And the person ended, when he upped it again, ended up dying, and the state's attorney filed murder charges against him. Well, they had to be dropped, because no one would sit on that jury. No one thought that this, this physician was guilty of it. The key that's there is many times, even with the medications, it enables a person to relax enough to be able to let go, because if you, one of the biggest things is somebody in a shipwreck, if you, you clinging on for dear life, and out of fear, we cling on, and the key is for people to feel safe and relaxed. And I know, in my work with them in leaving, that was my goal, is that they could come to a place of not feeling afraid and be able to do it. And I know for me personally, I want to have the right of my choice, just like you have the right of your choice. And I really appreciate the council considering this, because you all act in behalf of us in terms of the well-being of our city, and you also represent us in terms of who we are in the state. And so, for the council to pass this resolution that we can present to legislators, it's saying that we are representing the people of the city of Silver City, and this is the majority of opinion, that we want the rights. Doesn't mean you have to use it, but you have the right to exercise it, should the situation arise, just like the people who want everything done for them have a right for that, and people who want partials, it's the people who have the terminal and the pain, that they have a right to have that choice to, of dying with dignity. Thank you.
I have a question for you before I make a motion.
Counselor Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say to Counselor Connaught, I would appreciate the End of Life Options Act since it's mentioned in here, and I appreciate you considering, at least, you know, postponing it so we have a chance to look at it, and other people in the community might give us their opinion as well. So, thank you.
Do you have a motion?
I move to postpone Resolution two thousand and eighteen dash twelve, resolution supporting the enactment of the End of Life Options Act by the New Mexico Legislature until the first meeting in May of two thousand and eighteen.
Motion, is there a second? Counselor Gray?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion second, any discussion? All in favor of postponing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is eleven D, the approval slash disapproval of Notice of Intent, Ordinance Number Twelve-Sixty-Six, and Ordinance Amending Municipal Code, Chapter Two, Administration, Section Two-Dash-eighty-A, Regular Meetings. Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to remove item eleven D from the agenda.
Do we have a motion to remove item eleven D from the agenda? Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'll second.
Counselor Connaught, second. Any discussion? All in favor of removing eleven D, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Eleven D, yes, may I? Next item on the new business is the approval slash disapproval to change the regular council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, May the eighth, two thousand and eighteen, at six P M., to Tuesday, May the fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at six P M. in the Grant County Administration Center. Counselor Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm the one that requested this change. I have the American Alliance of V Zns meeting that crosses over on that Tuesday. I'll be attending that meeting, it's directly related to my position as the one that I actually get paid for at the university museum. So, I've requested that the council consider scheduling the meeting for Tuesday, May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at six P M. here, and so, I just wanted to give folks the reason why, I'll be out of town, and it is extremely difficult to hear on the phone. And having done that several times, so that I won't miss meetings, it's, it's very difficult for me to hear folks. There's a lot of activity going on, sometimes that gets picked up by the microphones. So, I move to approve the change in the regular town council meeting schedule for Tuesday, May eighth, two thousand and eighteen, at six P M., to Tuesday, May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at six P M. in the Grant County Administration Center.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second? Counselor Amy Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion, yes.
Do we have a motion and a second? To move the meeting schedule for Tuesday, May eighth, two thousand and eighteen, at six P M., to Tuesday, May fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at six P M. in the Grant County Administration Building. Opposed and, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. I'd like to thank everybody for being here and for participating in your government. Thank you for being here. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, Mayor.
Counselor Amy Smith?
I move to carry.
So, the motion is adjourned, second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.